Can I welcome you all to the first of our 2021 Health and Wellbeing Boards? It's great to have you here and to wish you a happy new year. At the moment, it's not looking any better than where we left the last one, but it certainly will be different, I'm sure. We had a bit of a rollercoaster last year and we're heading into another one, I think. But anyway, we've all got used to, I hope, working at home and using teams despite the internet crashing out now and again. And I had the very pleasure of delivering one meeting, the computer's turning itself off to update, but, you know, we learned to live with that and we're kind of going to make a cup of tea as well. We've got a fairly big agenda today, so if we can keep the time and keep ourselves muted and if it starts to get sort of this, perhaps we'll turn our cameras off as well. Please indicate through chat or hands if you wish to speak and we'll try and keep, we don't miss anybody out. And we'll try and keep a pretty sharp meeting and move forward. And as I said, we are recording the session, so if you can capture the key items and put notes together for the future. So we'll take apologies, I've no apologies as anyone else, any apologies to give. No, we'll take that as read. Are there any for the members' declarations of any interest? No, good, we'll take those forward. The minutes of the previous meeting have been circulated. I don't think there's any matters arising that are not on the agenda, so can we take those as read? Okay, thanks very much. So we go to Chair's announcements and first, can I welcome to, which I don't know if they're in the meeting yet, is Phil Johns as the new Chief Operating Officer of our combined CCG. And as I say, he will join us. And welcome Sarah Astrick in a new role as Chair Designate of the combined CCG. So that's a great event and that is definitely moving forward. I don't know if we've got on to welcome Mel Coombs, who is the new Chief Check Officer of CWPT. And welcome Simon R C's in the room and thank him for all he's done for Warwickshire over his time as Chair, because that's absolutely brilliant. And say thanks, we've got our thanks to Jeanine Trissell, who's now moved on from a role in the CCGs and working with us. And welcome back councillor John Bowerman as Portfolio of Health from Nantucket Borough Council, who's replaced Neil Phillips, so we will record our thanks to Neil. And we also have sitting in to watch procedures two trainee junior doctors who are in placements in our, in public health, and that is Robert Stroud and Lea Butt. So great to have everybody in the meeting. It's very good to have such interest and everybody involved. So we'll move on to item two, which is Health and Wellbeing Partnerships to give us an update. And can I say over the past year, as we start a new year and move towards our place partnerships, been operational from April, really thank everybody who's been involved in all our three partnerships for a tremendous amount of work that has gone on despite Covid in the past, in the past year and really brought our three place partnerships in Warwickshire to a really good operational position with exciting plans for the future to really deliver the best bottom up to our people, to the people we represent. And so that's a tremendous effort that they have made and carried out in the past, in the past 12 months. So thank them very much for that. And Emily, would you like to, is Emily with us?
I can't see that she's on the call yet, Chair, so.
Thank you, Emily, welcome again. It's been a hard day. So I'll leave, let's say, thank our partnerships for everything they've done to get themselves to the excellent position and now to move forward and let you take over the item. Thank you, Emily.
Thanks, Les. Yeah, so I suppose as many things, obviously the last year in terms of the partnership, our place partnership agenda has been quite Covid dominated. So if all our partners within the Health and Wellbeing Partnership have supported the local IMTs, we're running weekly for each place, running since September, October, I think. So it's been really valuable in terms of supporting the Covid response, getting comms messages out around Covid prevention measures and vaccination campaigns, as well as just looking at the additional actions we can put in place to support our communities and supporting our community engagement approach. We've all, you'll see in the reports, each of the local areas have got, have determined local authorities with some similarities between them. So South, we've got mental health and wellbeing, improving outcomes for children and young people, looking after our environment, responding to climate change, and then of course, supporting Covid recovery. So Covid recovery, as I say, common across all, featuring specifically in Warwick, in Rugby, as well as mental health and wellbeing, alongside homelessness and health behaviours. And then in Warwickshire North, similarly looking at housing and health, obesity and lifestyle, reducing health inequalities and increasing access to services. So homelessness has been featured across all three of them, because we have got a new homelessness strategy for Warwickshire now. So they will be consulted and involved in that, the process to develop that strategy. And all partners have been updated around our plans to well, for Wellbeing for Life. So we are doing a soft launch for the Wellbeing for Life campaign this month, focusing particularly on five ways to wellbeing, obviously support and mental wellbeing at this difficult time. And a bit later in the year, March, April time, we'll be doing a more formal launch of the wider Wellbeing for Life programme, including Thrive at Work, which we would expect all partners to be supporting. And then obviously everyone in the Health and Wellbeing Board or represented organisations have signed up to working towards at least bronze level for Thrive, the Thrive programme. As part of that, we've also got a call to action around health inequalities, which I think Chris will mention. But just to say, again, we'll be launching that in March and April. That will be a call out to local businesses in terms of how they can support the health inequalities agenda. We'll be asking businesses to commit to specific actions tailored to their own circumstances. But additionally, we would want support from Health and Wellbeing Board members in terms of progressing that call to action. And a couple of key priorities, particularly around social prescribing, sorry, social value commissioning and looking at our HR policies, which I know has been mentioned at the Place Forum and supported through that network too. So that was kind of key updates really from the partnerships. We are all progressing and obviously we had the Place Based GSA work that was completed in 2018, which hasn't quite been used in the way it was intended, but has been really valuable in terms of supporting our Covid response, looking at communities that we need to prioritise. And was used in informing recently the implementation of the local community rapid testing sites. So looking at which areas we would want to prioritise in terms of making that, those tests available to higher risk groups. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Emily. So I'm assuming everyone has read the paper in our boards, as I said, that have really made, place partnerships have really made cracking progress in the past moments and are moving forward. Does anyone, any questions or points to raise? No, that's great. If we take, take the paper, the recommendation is that we note the progress and allow to that that we continue to support our place.
Les, I think it'd be inappropriate not to make no comment at all. I think that's really great work and the fact that the track and trace did it just pop anywhere at all. It was based upon risk base and based upon our GSA and knowledge of where the risk was. So well done. It is something that I wish that the government had thought about in the first place in all of its actions around Covid. So well done, really impressed.
Thank you for that, because I think both local authorities keep saying, all our locals, you know, should have given us the money that has gone around elsewhere and then had to get on with it and we'd be in a cracking place. But we're where we are. We'll continue to be a very good partnership and do all we can to help one another. So thank you for that, Emily. If we move on to item three, which is child accident prevention, and I think Leanne is taking that. Welcome, Leanne.
Hi, Board. Yes, so the paper just summarises, we knew last year that accidents were really high in Warwickshire compared to our statistical neighbours. And Les yourself headed the CAT steering board that we've been running for quite some time. It had very good representation of our stakeholders and partnerships. And we were doing some work around making sure that we had the right messages. We had MECC training, which is make every contact count around preventing accidents. And that was going really well with everyone from the fire service, the CCG and partners across the council, the family information service, harvesting, all bought into the process. Obviously then we had Covid happen around March. At that point, we were about to do an audit of our processes in the hospital to understand whether there was some duplication across using maybe George Eliot and not being able to progress around their care at George Eliot due to not having sort of paediatric accident support, like X-ray level at that hospital site. And then maybe going across to the commentary site to have those procedures. So we were just about to kick that off, just as Covid hit and therefore obviously all the staff were inundated with other issues in A and E. So it wasn't really the right time to run that audit. So that was put on pause, but that's something we're also going to look at, I think, once lockdowns are released and everyone's moving a lot more freely. So following the lockdown which happens around last April, we then sent out messages around in the home accidents. We were really concerned about issues like stair gates, open windows, falling from heights in the home, hot water scoles, sort of shop objects. So we sent around messages again via the information, family information service around looking at anything around accidents in the home to prevent, like having a safe space if you need to work with children at home, having a safe space in which you can keep the children as you are sort of distracted and trying to go about your workday. We also linked it around, sending around mental health messages for young adolescents as well. And then also we, we sort of run some groups around trying to understand from the CDO panels, the Child Death Overview Panel, whether there are any increase during any lockdowns of any deaths of any sort, which we could lead to some prevention workarounds. That's just led to sort of more messaging around things like when families are being displaced around appropriate use of cots, temporary cots. So some of them are being used inappropriately and then obviously alcohol consumption. And then this was reiterated again just a couple of weeks ago when we did the messaging in early December, just before Christmas, around reminding families around the three, the ABC of alcohol and then bed sharing, batteries, button batteries are still, although we haven't had any deaths in Warwickshire, they're still nationally a problem. And then C, which is around appropriate cot use, because some people may be staying in other people's homes that they may not have otherwise due to restrictions and tiering at this time. So those messages went out for Christmas again to prevent some of our deaths. Going forward for the rest of this year, we'll just be looking at trying to pick up the rest of the work once life turns back to normality, watching the Child Death Overview Panel to see if there's anything further that we can do to prevent, you know, ad hoc wise as and when it happens, to send out those prevention messages. And then continuing to make every contact count around accidents.
Thank you, Leanne. Stella Manzi.
Hi, Leanne. Thank you very much for that report. I just, a couple of things I was interested in. I think your thrust about unintentional accidents and things during Covid is absolutely right, because you can only, you know, everybody is far more on top of each other than they normally are, particularly if they're not in very big housing and all the rest of it. So I think that's, that's absolutely great. I was just curious about the bit in paragraph 1.2 in the report, which talks about different hospital processes maybe having a role to play in higher than, than average admissions, particularly at UHCW. I was just curious to know a little bit more about that. Is it, I imagine it's something to do with, I don't know, admitting people more frequently or something? Could you just tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so ultimately at George Eliot Hospital, there isn't a children's ward that you can admit the child to. They have a onsite paediatrician, but not actually a sort of ward that you can admit them to. So they might go to George Eliot first, this is a belief by, this is anecdotal evidence that we wanted to get some real robust evidence.
Oh, I understand.
So from the A and E team at Nantucket, George Eliot, they felt and communicated that they felt people came to them first because they have a very fast process to see children. And then they were referring them to CWPT to get the scans, that when you do a scan of a very young child, especially things like their limbs, which is what a lot of our injuries are, they need to be sedated. And if they are sedated late in the day, they will then admit them and will not discharge them home. So there's something about the time at which they present at the various hospitals to see whether that had some form of impact. And so what we were going to do is an audit of hospital information as they were approaching A and E at George Eliot. And then try and see if there's, we can do some matching across the two sites to see if there was anything in that, which could lead to some, A, a level of double counting, and B, just because of the lateness of presentation might mean that they're being admitted when actually we sent out messages saying, if you've got this kind of injury, don't come to George Eliot, go straight to CWPT. And that could make an impact statistically on our figures, but at the minute that was anecdotal.
Do you mean, do you mean CWPT or do you mean UHCW?
Sorry, yes.
Sorry, just checking.
But yeah, so we just need to make sure that they were definitely being, it was, whether it was actually more accidents or whether there was some, some level on some point of double counting.
Yeah, so it's trying to get behind that statistical issue, because you're right, when you see something that says coffin tree, you know, is first or whatever, or Warwickshire is higher than it should be, it does make you think, well, what's fine then? Okay, that's, that's fine, thank you. Just useful to understand a bit more about that. And I understand why all of that work has obviously slowed down, because people, people have got other priorities at the moment, but clearly in the longer term it's important. So thanks very much.
Yeah, and it'd be something, I think, once people go back to sports as they were and other things, and now obviously we're just trying to get to the actual real crux of the reasons. Because I think a lot of times we have assumptions on why something's happening and we send out messages. But we really wanted to, you know, under the leadership of Les through the steering group, we really wanted to understand the real reasons to why and tackle it right at the source. So I think just working out what that was and then understanding then the type of injuries more at the coalface would be really a lot more helpful to understand what was happening.
Okay, that's lovely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dave Parsons.
Oh yeah, sorry, I took a bit of time.
All right.
Someone has got a mute button issue.
Definitely got a button issue, probably a coordination issue too. There we go. Just a couple of things. One of the things that I've got a bit of a thing about, I mean, you mentioned batteries and, I mean, button batteries seem to me to be the absolute, you know, they need to be banned in my view. The, apparently if they are regested, the damage to the hearing is terrible and they are just, you know, of the proportions that a small child is going to pick up and swallow them basically. We discovered earlier, we have a six-year-old who stays overnight, a grandchild. And one of, one of the Christmas penguin has got these button batteries. And in the end, it became a bit, the batteries were falling out, so we just had to throw it away basically. But I mean, I really do think nationally something needs to be done about, about these button batteries, because they really are a hazard and so I'd absolutely back you on that and that's there. I mean, I was really interested in what you said about as well, people being thrown together in the lockdown. It's going to be a long stint this time. And I saw, in fact, my wife saw a lovely, a lovely Atlantic goat, other people may have seen it, but a lady who put on the, you know, home teaching and all that. If you see my children locked out, then mind your own business, we're having a fire drill. And I thought that was. I can see exactly where she's coming from. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think the message is, it was one of those things, I think we think that especially, I think every home thinks that they've got themselves sorted. Like, but we're in a different routine every day, children are more around these hazards. And a lot of people were buying presents off the internet, that kind of thing. And they don't get to look over them to see the quality of the, of the, the present and the toy. And so, yeah, that's where we really did stress that at Christmas again, we wanted to have those messages around the button batteries. And thankfully, we haven't had any serious mortalities or, you know, sort of morbidities or any mortalities in Warwickshire. But, you know, it's a fear that I always have. I keep my button batteries in the attic, because I'm so scared of having them in my house.
I'm trying to, you say anything that has them as well, basically.
Yes. And I agree, there's lots to be done around, you know, people almost like not treating the toy as a given that they are. Because a lot of the fake toys have the safety marks fakedly put on them. So it's just, again, just making sure that people are just aware of those risks.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Joe Barker's posted a very, they shouldn't all have screw down flats over button batteries.
They should, but these toys do fall apart.
The toy question, I have one, Les, but the, it was a, you know, a screw going into a plastic thread and the thread just went.
And don't tread on the screws.
Thanks, yeah. It's perhaps something we could also cooperate with Trading Standards on, because they might be in a position to do representations where we.
Yeah, I mean, Trading Standards, I think, all over counterfeit toys as well anyway. But, and that's where it's down to the parent, I think, to safeguard it completely to their home in the first place. And that's why we'll always push the messages early December around button batteries. But the displacement issue around families, makeshift homes, as they just try and move between, especially like informal childcare, emerging bubbles and things like that, those rules have led to people living in different scenarios than they normally would have done. And so it's just being aware of, you know, that temporary bed scenario. And then, you know, drinking with links to that, so that's the A, the alcohol bit of that. But yeah, so those messages have gone out, especially at Christmas and they'll continue, you know, every Christmas. But it's just been aware and we're linking it with CDO, the Child Death Overview Panel, anything new that comes in, that could be a risk. We're just leaving on a lot of that.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Les. Yeah, I'm really pleased that there's a focus on this area, because it's been something that we worry over the years. Is this steering group that Les is leading, Les, is that continuing? And will we get feedback from it? So obviously you're looking in to see whether, you know, we really are an outlier if you get to the bottom of the data. And then what I was really pleased to hear about, you're trying to push down onto what's actually happening to cause these accidents. It's really important work, so it'd be great to hear more as you go along.
I think once we all get back to a regular routine and I think we'll bring it more back up again. At the minute, we're responding to risks as we are now and as we were in the last lockdown and the next lockdown and then over Christmas. So we're responding to sources of accidents at this time. And then I think once we go back to the normal routine, we'll find out what was causing those accidents before. Because obviously with children not being in school at the minute and not being in school last summer and then being off of the six weeks holidays, we weren't having the level of sort of accidents. And to interrogate the data at that point wouldn't have been the right thing to do and not a good use of resources. Because obviously, you know, I've been managing all the school outbreaks since last May. So it's just been, it's been too resource intensive. Sorry, Les.
No, no, that's fine. I was going to say exactly the same. We haven't lost focus, but because we need support from the hospitals that to do the deep dig that Leanne has mentioned, we need to do to get to, as you say, Margaret, find where we really sit. It's one thing that has to be, although Leanne is very much abroad and boss of it, we are further behind than we would like, but we, circumstances have just made it impossible, but we are, are well aware. And the minute we get out the next three or four months, it will come back, hopefully for the further back up the agenda, so we can get on with it.
Thanks very much. That's great. Thanks.
Is that fine? I've got Marion on the office next.
Thank you, Chair. Leanne, I just wondered where this, does this information come out on Ask Warwickshire or something like that? Because I honestly haven't seen it and I don't wish to sound negative when I say that. But I have a lot of communication with Jane Sherman with all her information. But I can't say that all the information you're talking about has been readily coming out. And I know I've read in the report today that on one of the surveys, North Warwickshire was really quite low in responding to a survey and that was on Ask Warwickshire. And one of the comments I was going to make is should Ask Warwickshire be advertised on Jane's community, community social media, which is what I send out every single week to everybody in the world. Because it doesn't, it just doesn't seem to be connecting together somehow. Um, I'm, I just don't know what the answer is, but I haven't actually got aligned with this information. I know we should go everywhere to get information, but I'm talking about my residence over here.
Um, other than the, the general one which has gone out about batteries, that, that, that's been universal. But the sort of the day-to-day work that we're talking about and getting stats hasn't, hasn't gone anywhere, we haven't completed.
No, I don't mean the stats, I just mean the, the, the general word about the, you know, the protection about toys and that sort of thing. But it just seems like in one of the surveys, North Warwickshire was low. Um, and that was on Ask Warwickshire. I'm just wondering if there's, could it be a communication link when information is coming out with Jane as well? I know something else you need to think about, but.
All communication goes out through Jane's department, so, um, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have missed any, Marion, but we'll check that out for you.
Yeah, I'll take that as an action to follow up because all ours came out via the Family Information Service, so I'll just make sure that they link in with Ask Warwickshire.
Yeah, okay, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comment? Uh, in, in which, in which case, um, uh, we're, we're asked, we're asked to, uh, note the update and, and the future work we propose, as I say, uh, get a bit further down the year, we hope to speed this up and get something more, uh, with some new facts back, back to you all so that we know better where we're going. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. If we can move on to item four, which is, um, Covid resident survey, and I think Emily, you're taking this. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Um, so, um, you may remember that in August, September, we ran a survey of local residents to understand how they responded to Covid and the impact that the pandemic and the pandemic response measures has had for them. So we worked alongside Coventry, uh, Coventry University to develop the survey and they have supported us with additional analysis, um, doing some clever statistical techniques, which, um, I'll share some of the findings from that with you. It's been really valuable in terms of adding some additional, um, robust analysis of the survey. So hopefully this will be loading up on your screen now.
It's there.
Great. Um, so as I say, the purpose was to, um, sorry, I'm not quite sure if I've got the right version up. Sorry, I'm going to stop sharing. Okay. Hope you got a slightly different version up now with the blue header. Um, so as I say, aim to, um, uh, understand and get some insight into the impacts of the pandemic on local residents. We asked about a number of things, some kind of knowledge and understanding of Covid, at, um, how they would be able to comply with tests and trace, look to impacts on health while being employment, volunteering, and some of, some priorities of residents in terms of looking forward into the future. So we were really pleased, we had two and a half thousand responses to the survey. So we had directly sent invitations to take part in the survey to 10,000 residents. So around a 25% response rate, which is good, although having added that we did also do additional comms to promote the survey as well. Obviously some limitations, so it's correlation design, so some of the associations I show you are just, um, as I say, associations rather than actually being certain around causality. We did have some groups that were particularly underrepresented, so 18 to 29-year-olds. Residents from North Warwickshire, Lanetan and Rugby, uh, were slightly underrepresented compared to the, the normal, um, distribution of our population. About a third or just under a third responses from men. And minority ethnic groups were slightly underrepresented with 92% of respondents being white British versus 89% across Warwickshire. But given the overall sample size of the two and a half thousand, we were still able to do analysis against some of those subgroups. Um, and as with any survey, there will be an element of self-selection or respondent bias, um, in, in affecting the results. So we need to take a bit of caution with that. Um, it was conducted, as I say, August, September, some of the questions obviously asking people to think back to the initial lockdown period, but then mainly focused on kind of how residents were feeling at that time. But some of the findings I think you'll see will be helpful as we, um, now in another lockdown period. So at the time of the survey, um, um, it's about ni- 90% of people were worried about the impact of the pandemic on their, their life overall. Um, so around 10% at that time were saying they weren't concerned. Around 80% felt they had enough information around coronavirus and how to protect themselves. Obviously that still left 20% that were either unsure or didn't feel they had enough information. Main sources of information for Covid-related information are shown in that chart there. And you can see predominantly it's very much about news outlets and national or local news, um, central government websites. And then next, um, on the list, fourth on the chart there, social media channels. I know it's been valuable that our comms teams have pushed a lot out through social media channels, but obviously those channels represent some challenges around misinformation as well. So in terms of test and trace, we asked specifically around people knowing how to get a test, whether they felt they would be able to effectively self-isolate, whether they'd be supported by their employer if they were in work, and whether they would comply with the request to, um, provide details to test and trace. So that could either be when you're visiting a venue and have to give your personal details, um, or primarily people likely to be thinking about, obviously if they are a case and would, um, share details around contacts and whether those contacts themselves would then comply. So in terms of knowing how to get a test, um, generally it was pretty good in terms of, um, feel, felt, feeling they, they knew how to get a test. But we did see about a quarter of people at that time not being sure, um, in terms of how to get a test. And 6% strongly disagreeing that they knew how to get a test. We responded to this quite quickly, um, so we obviously had interim surveys, uh, interim results available from the survey back in October. And since then, comms have responded to this by ensuring all of our messages that go out include the NHS dot UK forward slash coronavirus link or, um, information about 119 to call to book a test. Um, it was slightly higher amongst over 75s, which perhaps, uh, is, uh, partly a result of a lot of the communication being digital. Um, so whilst it was 6% of respondents strongly disagreeing they didn't know how to get a test. And if you look at the fourth chart there, around 6%, um, it said they wouldn't comply with test and trace. That does represent a significant number of Warwickshire residents, so about 35,000. Um, sadly not everybody felt they would be supported by their employer if they needed to isolate. You see about 15% there disagreeing with that statement. And it was higher in the north of the county, uh, which is somewhat concerning because we know the north, um, particularly has some of those kind of essential services around infrastructure, distribution hubs, um, supermarket hub, uh, distribution hubs, um, and things like that. So concern there, obviously through all of our engagement with businesses, through workplace outbreaks and proactive communications, we really emphasise the fact that they must support people to self-isolate. And I think we've seen, um, seen improvements in that, um, based on employees increasingly recognising that the risks from coronavirus and, you know, not enabling people to self-isolate, obviously risking further transmission within their workplace and hence further impact on their business. So in terms of employment, um, and changes to, to how people were working, uh, around half of respondents felt they had, um, experienced increases in work-related stress. Quite a mixed picture in terms of perceptions of work-life fads, so around a third felt it was better. And around, and around a third felt it was worse. Um, 40% felt they, it was more difficult for them to combine work and caring responsibilities during the pandemic period, which I don't think is a surprise and obviously many will be experiencing that during this, um, time as well. Um, sadly around half of respondents were somewhat or very concerned around reductions in employment or income, but I suppose not, not surprising sadly. Um, people were concerned about contracting Covid-19 at work, so around two-thirds of respondents stating those concerns. Um, and around four in five not concerned about working from home more, um, but one in five very or somewhat concerned, which I suppose, um, highlights the, the differences within our communities with all of this, um, and potential impacts on, on inequalities in terms of how we work and how we access, um, work, um, and what that means for wider risks around Covid as well. So looking at, we asked people how comfortable they felt accessing different settings, um, and perhaps unsurprisingly again, parks and green spaces were the places people felt most comfortable accessing as well as kind of other outdoor leisure, uh, leisure attractions. Um, takeaways, people fairly comfortable with, uh, or outdoor cafe, pub-type settings. As you move indoors, obviously people more concerned about Covid risks. Um, and you can see towards the bottom there, public transport and hospital, hospitals were, um, of high concern in terms of people accessing services through those routes. Um, the key measures which made people feel more comfortable, um, were limiting numbers in settings, having hand sanitizer stations available, um, protective screens, which, um, we've obviously all, all experienced, um, those in place. Uh, we're doing some work at the moment with our, um, Covid-19 prevention response team and our environmental health colleagues to have a period of focus specifically on supermarkets and shops being one of the few places people will be regularly accessing at the moment. And some concerns that some outlets have let those measures slip, excuse me. So, um, you can see there in terms of some of the qualitative information that we had in the survey, people understood the benefit of those prevention measures but were concerned about kind of adherence by others. Um, it, there were concerns raised in comments around the impact some of the measures have on people with disabilities, such as, you know, having enough space, um, in, on streets, which have been widened to promote social distancing and reducing social connection with mask wearing and some of the communication barriers that, um, does, does lead to. And I think colleagues, um, within economy, um, have recognised, the economy environment's face of work recognise a mixed response really to the increase of pedestrianisation of areas. Some positive findings around people's health behaviours, so half of participants said that they walked or cycled more, um, during the, during the pandemic periods and felt that over the next few months they probably would increase, um, their walking or cycling for short journeys, but were less likely to increase use of public transport, which again wouldn't be surprising. Um, have highlighted some, um, barriers in terms of, of active travel. So concerns around safety on the roads, really, uh, traffic and, and behaviours of other road users. See journeys being too far is a difficult one to overcome. Um, but comments around not having a bike for the right equipment, which potentially we could help people to access. Um, I know some colleagues in the communities were looking at some of the kind of community-based, um, bike, bike swap, swap schemes, um, that are available. And then equipment and storage facilities, um, which is really important to think about when we're obviously engaging with employers and within our own settings as people come back to work, uh, following the pandemic in terms of making those facilities available. So people do feel more confident and comfortable to walk or cycle to work. We asked about, um, people, how comfortable people were feeling about accessing, uh, hospital or GP appointments remotely or in person. And you can see the spread there, uh, so, you know, 85% of people comfortable, um, oh, sorry, most people comfortable accessing through those routes. In terms of how likely they would be to take up health consultations through different methods. Average 85% of people are likely to access by telephone. Over 70% likely to access through online appointments and consultations and a similar proportion in person. Think, um, the key thing that came through really was that the preference very much depended on the health issue and the individual preference. So you can see some of the, the benefits and concerns people felt about accessing in different ways. Obviously the lack of being able to physically, um, observe patients through online or telephone consultations is a limitation for, for certain conditions. Implications for healthcare providers, I think is an important one for partners to consider as we move toward, um, if we are to, to maintain more virtual appointments. And then in terms of volunteering and community action, we obviously saw an amazing response from our local communities, um, and to me now in terms of, um, supporting the, the response to Covid and supporting people in their local areas. Um, you can see the split in terms of the agreement with the statement of, that people gave in terms of if they needed help during a period of lockdown, whether they felt members of their community would support them. So broadly around two-thirds of Warwickshire residents were confident that they would be able to access support from their local community. Tended to be higher in the south, um, and you can see there typically Lanetan and Bedworth, around 50% of patients felt confident, uh, residents felt confident about that. Um, so we did, highest in the south, which I think, um, people that know the local area would, would, um, recognise. Volunteering also seemed to be higher in the south. Of, around 50% of residents reported helping someone in their local area, so on their streets, so that's kind of an informal support. 15% have volunteered through either local organisations or NHS volunteers and 10% had offered help through other routes. And people could select multiple options there, but I think it's a, a, a really, um, impressive indication of the amount of support people were providing within their own communities. So the key activities are shown there, so very much, um, support around practical tasks and enabling people to have some type of social connection to prevent loneliness. Obviously barriers around health concerns or age, so if people were in vulnerable categories, um, are less likely to be volunteering. And obviously if working or, or had caring responsibilities, they would, uh, just have less time to volunteer. So in terms of health behaviours, uh, we asked people what kind of things they've done to help them cope with social isolation during the pandemic. Um, and the top two bars there are pretty positive behaviours, so on the whole it felt positive. Um, so the top one there in terms of engaging in healthy behaviours, like eating healthily, trying to get good sleep and avoiding drugs or alcohol was reported by almost 60% of patients. As, uh, residents, as was, uh, taking breaks from listening, um, to the news too much, which kind of have a negative impact on us, which I'm sure we do recognise. And trying to connect with people and making time to relax, also quite high up there. That said, we did see a significant proportion of people reporting increases in unhealthy behaviours. So about one in five saying they increased their alcohol consumption, increased, um, sugary or fatty food consumption, or generally one in three saying they increased eating behaviours, uh, eating in general. We saw differences between important population groups in these. So really important highlighting the, the people who had self-reported that they had pre-existing mental health conditions prior to the pandemic were three times more likely to have increased smoking to help them cope. Women were two and a half times more likely to have increased, um, consumption of high-fat or sugar foods. Um, participants, participants from ethnic minority groups were twice as likely to have increased eating. So whilst, um, I said at the beginning, some of those groups were underrepresented, including baying participants. As I say, the sample size overall did mean that we could find those as statistically significant findings. So then we also asked about the kind of concerns people had about the pandemic and the pandemic response measures. So these, we've, we've termed Covid stresses. Um, and you can, and these, the numbers here reflect a combined proportion of respondents saying they were very or extremely worried about each stressor. So I hope it's big enough for you to read, obviously risks of loved ones becoming infected was, was high up there, was half of respondents concerned about that. Um, and then changes to social routines, the lack of time with friends and loved ones. And, and interestingly, potential changes to the, or impacts on the global or national economy were high on people's concerns too. Um, there's a lot in there, I wasn't going to read through the whole list, but I will come back to this a bit later with some of the analysis that Coventry University has had done, which I think is really interesting. So I'll just pause there to let you digest that a little.
I've got one hand up for a question, but I can't see a name with it, so, uh, please carry on, who's asking the question? I've got one hand up, I can't get a name to it.
I call my hand up, uh, Les.
Okay, yeah, carry on, uh, Russell, thank you.
No, Les, my question or point will be at the end, so it's not at the moment, so I'll come back, my phone's 70s finished.
Okay.
Thanks, Russell.
So in terms of the experience of Covid stresses, we found that again, some groups that were more likely to, to, um, experience those stresses. So younger people, so in their age 18 to 20, four-year-olds were 24% higher than over 75s to report some stresses. Women, again, about 13% higher than men reporting, in terms of reporting stresses. And people with pre-existing mental health conditions, about 16% higher than people without. Um, people who were self-employed or not employed, again, slightly higher representation there. And this was quite interesting, I think, um, can't, uh, difficult to understand, um, really interpret it. But those that were working but not living in Warwickshire reported, um, stresses around seven. seventeen point five per cent higher than people who were living and working in Warwickshire, or certainly living in Warwickshire. Maybe Warwickshire is a protected factor itself. COVID nineteen certainly increased, sorry, experience of COVID nineteen stresses increased feelings of loneliness and reduced feelings of mental wellbeing, which is not surprising. We measured stresses on a scale of not at all stressful to extremely stressful, and gave a score of one to four for those measures. Then we averaged out, Coventry University averaged out those scores and then used those scores against wellbeing and loneliness scores in a multiple regression. So it's a statistical analysis technique that enables them to control for demographic factors, mentioned at the bottom there, mental health conditions, age, gender, et cetera. And then looked at the relationship in terms of how much people experienced stressor and how much that impacted on feelings of loneliness or wellbeing. So overall, we found that half of participants reported feeling lonely, either some always or some of the time always or often. Again, found similar groups highlighted in terms of those that were more likely to experience loneliness or reduced wellbeing. So we recognise the commonality coming through, younger people, women, people with pre-existing mental health conditions, or those who were not in employment, but not including retired people. And then we saw also slightly lower mental wellbeing overall for amongst residents in the north of the county. Well, Nunn Eton and Bedworth and Rugby there. And in terms of the associations that Coventry University colleagues looked at between health behaviours and impacts on wellbeing, we found that engaging in healthy behaviours led to a one point one percent, one point one point increase in wellbeing. Taking time to relax, a one point four increase in wellbeing. And to give some context, let's use the shortened version of the Warwick Edmondson Wellbeing Scale, in which if you saw an increase of four, a change of four points in that wellbeing scale, that would be quite a clinically meaningful result. So you can see how these impacts add up. Increasing alcohol, a naught point six, naught point six point decrease in wellbeing and similar increasing eating overall, and a slightly higher decrease in wellbeing for those who increase high fat and sugar consumption. So really important in terms of some of the health promotion messages we send out and need to send out at this time, and the groups that we need to target. A positive one in terms of helping others, that was associated with a point three point decrease in loneliness and a point eight increase in wellbeing. And it did, in terms of wellbeing, differ by age group, so quite a significant increase amongst kind of over seventy fives and over sixties there, less so in terms of younger people. But we know volunteering can be good for wellbeing and physical health, in fact, there's evidence for that too. So I think that reflects some of the findings from previous national research. So we also then wanted to think about, how do we maintain some of the increase in volunteering that we've seen through the pandemic response? So we asked about the types of activities people might be willing to engage in with the local communities, whether it be community action or community kind of activity groups. You can see over a quarter of people would be willing to support people with practical tasks in the future also. And then gardening, conservation, arts crafts, actual climate change, all featured quite highly. So I know colleagues in the communities team, community development offices are looking at this to see how we can keep the volunteering up as we get out of this pandemic, which will happen. And then in terms of obviously recovering from the pandemic and impacts of COVID, just those, some of the measures that people said they would find most helpful to themselves. So feeling more comfortable in terms of accessing health services, obviously a key priority. Feeling confident to access public transport and coming back into our town centres is a big one for people too. Again, unsurprisingly, we're all desperate to get out of this and get back to some kind of normal life where we can engage with our local communities and facilities that we have available to us. And then financial impacts obviously were a concern for people in terms of the impact of the pandemic and obviously people wanting to feel more comfortable there. But I think also really important to note, a high number of people saying they do want information and support around mental health and wellbeing and with healthy lifestyles. And then smaller numbers interested in community, small but not insignificant numbers interested in continuing with community engagement or volunteering. But also people then talking about access to technology or other equipment, so we mentioned bikes earlier, obviously access to the internet and laptops, et cetera, is really important. Again, at this time, there's another push to enable that for young people to help with home learning, but more broadly, we do need to look at that in terms of supporting people to access health services remotely as well. So that's it, enough of me talking.
Really, really interesting. Thanks, Emily. Russell.
Yeah, just building what you just said there, really fantastic piece of work, Emily. And I think the fact we did it with Coventry University is great and an awful lot to absorb. So if you can send out the presentation so we can reflect on it again, I think that's super. The thing that's going through my mind is, we're living in a world at the moment, all of us, of COVID, but the war will end. Part of the issue is how much we will all have changed through the period of living through COVID. And the two groups that particularly worry me are the elderly who are lonely and the young who have been through the, they may have seen it as the opportunity of not going to school with the trauma of missing so much of education. And in advance of our health and wellbeing strategy update, which I know is leading on next. It does seem to me that the most likely outcome is we come through COVID with a vaccine that works, but COVID is always there in the future, there will be different vaccines in the future. But almost permanently, the way people do things and the way people think about things will have changed. In the analysis, you talked about public transport as an example, how worried people were about using public transport, which is one of our key sustainability strategies as a region. So I think we need a period, I don't think now is the right time, Les, but over the next few months, where we reflect on what COVID means in terms of our priorities for health and wellbeing strategy. Because almost certainly, we'll need to be more agile as we come out and we see how much damage emotionally in particular has been done to our elderly who are lonely and our young who have lived through this trauma and have a bundle of other issues. That's just my observations.
Thank you. I've got Simon next. Simon, Margaret.
Thank you, Les. Thank you, Emily, for that really comprehensive report. All I was going to ask was two questions, or one question, which is, are we linking this work into the Coventry Warwickshire wide work on mental health strategy and the like? I know lots of your colleagues are involved, and if not, we should make that connection because I think there is a very clear fit. But linked to that, in the autumn of last year, we did a comprehensive piece of work across the West Midlands with other NHS mental health providers, looking at a kind of statistical analysis of what had happened to kind of mental health need and pressures as a result of previous pandemics and the like, such as SARS. So there'll be a really, really neat fit between your real time, you know, in the moment feedback from residents matched up with the kind of analytical basis, which we're using currently to try and get the right capacity in place to respond to need and get early intervention. So there'll be a really powerful fit there if we could explore that.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks, Simon. So we're currently taking a mental health needs assessment for Coventry and Warwickshire. So yeah, these findings will feed into that. And we've asked the CWP to obviously share some of the analysis they've done to hopefully those two things will come together in that piece of work. But as yourself and Russell have requested, we'll obviously share the slides widely through yourselves and we'll go to each of our place-based IMTs as well, thinking about the COVID response.
Thank you, Simon. Margaret.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks very much, Emily, that was really great. But just a bit of an observation really, I was very interested when you were talking about how people felt supported by their community or whether they would participate, et cetera. And Nunn Eton and Bedworth came fairly low in the, well, lowest in the list. And they don't have parish councils. And it was just, the parish councils in our area at least have been very instrumental in being a focus, not doing all the work, but being a focus for a lot of this activity. And it just occurs to me, if we're looking at community work in the future, we just need to bear that in mind as far as Nunn Eton and Bedworth are concerned, and maybe put other things in place because they haven't got parish councils and therefore they need more of a local focus somehow. And I have a solution, I'm just giving you another problem. So I just think, but it's just an observation that it might be one of the reasons.
Yeah, no, that's really helpful. We'll certainly consider that going forward. I think, as I said about North Warwickshire and similarly Nunn Eton and Bedworth do have higher proportions of people working in essential services, manufacturing, food distribution, wider distribution hubs, et cetera. So I wonder whether some of that may have impacted in terms of people's ability to volunteer, even if they were willing. Yeah.
Might be for Nunn Eton Bedworth to use the PCN, JSNA areas as a starting point. And see what breaks out of that. Just also, Chris Baines commented on the chat, and ladies deserve it, maybe catch it with Chris off after the meeting, Emily, and just compare notes. And I suppose the other thing we need to start thinking about, the, looking at the alcohol eating and smoking, how do we stop that? Do we pull that back or start to pull it back now? Because that's, you know, going to be another burden on the system if we don't pull that back. Now we're certainly at the end of the phase we've entered again now. And then adding to that, how are we going to compare this, which is September, to say March this year? We almost need to do it again as we get to the end of this lot, just to see trends or whether it's problems like the, certainly problems like smoking and drinking to become more embedded.
Yeah, I think it'd be really interesting to re-run.
Yeah, Marion.
Sorry, Chair, I'm trying to unmute. And thank you, I'm really glad to hear you saying about the re-run because I'm sitting here quite frustrated that I've got villages that are so active in the volunteering sectors that haven't shown up in these statistics at all. So to have a re-run, I think, would be fantastic. And when I know it's actually going to happen, I am going to be shouting this end to actually get people to complete it. And I know, I think, a lot of people here will be disappointed that they either have just missed it and not realised that, you know, it's one of those things that so much has gone on, they've just put on the back burner and not bothered with. But we shall really plug it next time because there is so much good work going on over here with volunteers that, you know, it's not shown up. And I think that's a shame because there's a lot of people with a lot of difficulties over here that would have been good input into your survey.
Yeah, we'll work out.
Really good work, really good work, Emily, it's fantastic work. I just feel frustrated sitting there that there's not enough input from our lot.
That's fine, thanks, Mary. Russell, you wanted to come back.
Yeah, sorry, Les, I don't want to label the point, but just almost building what Marion said. And I just think in terms of our forward agenda, maybe after you stood down this chair, we do just need to make sure that we don't embed in the next item on the agenda, strategy, which after a few months of seeing what post-COVID looks like, we actually want to rejuggle some of the priorities like you were suggesting in your concluding remarks. So thinking about the forward agenda, I know it's next on our agenda today to confirm strategy, but it seems to me that we should be thinking about that again in three to six months when we see what the post-COVID world looks like and we do another version of what you've just done, Emily. Thank you.
That's great, thank you, Russell. So we're going to move on to updates and we are going to change the running order. I'm very sorry about this, but we've got a couple of presenters that are time limited. So we're just going to shuffle it a little bit. Can I start by welcoming Phil Johns and ask him to introduce himself, who gives us an update on vaccinations, which isn't on our agenda, but I think is very critical as to where we are at the present time. Phil, are you there? I saw him come in the meeting. Hello? Paul, we've got a problem.
Mr. Johns is still showing his present share at the moment.
Come to make a cup of tea.
Perhaps Chair, perhaps Chair take the next update and revisit and see if they get in touch.
We're going to take the next update and then come back. And it does then fit with what we've just been talking about, is the JSNA update Duncan, because I realise you need to get away.
Yeah, many thanks, Chair. You should all have seen the paper and had a chance to have a look at it, so more than happy to obviously take any questions following my update, but it is probably just to highlight the progress that we're making on the JSNA. So the first thing I want to highlight was about the place-based needs assessments. And Emily gave a really wonderful example of how they've been used by partners in terms of the rapid testing sites. But again, just to highlight some of the work that's been done through them to sort of ensure that services are targeted and aligned with the needs of populations. And again, other examples there of how they've been used to support funding bits by providing an evidence base to sort of set out the need to, you know, within that bit. And finally, also, sort of examples of how they've been used to develop action plans and inform strategy, again, by some of our health and wellbeing partnerships in each of the places. And again, in the long term, you know, I hope that when sort of commissioning resumes as normal, we'll be able to sort of use them to inform commissioning plans. And one of the recommendations for the Health and Wellbeing Board is to ensure that organisations are using the evidence base and again, just to make sure that everyone is aware of the offer of support if you need, you know, needed to discuss the JSNA documents and also sort of work out how we might best use them for different organisations. In terms of the next phase of JSNA work, we started a series of discussions about prioritisation work and you can see a list of JSNA's that have been, potential thematic JSNA's that have been identified through discussions, both the JSNA Strategic Group and with wider commissioners. And we started an approach to help to prioritise them, both by understanding the impact that the different JSNA's would have, both in terms of assuring that partners are all sort of developing a shared understanding of health needs as well as informing commissioning plans. And the resources needed for each one of those and that will be used to put together a forward plan for that thematic work. Again, we'd want it to have some flexibility in case there's any sort of last minute issues that arise, but you know, it's hope that was set out, some of the more chunky items for the next few years. And again, that's something we will bring back to the Health and Wellbeing Board based on those sort of discussions to ensure we've got an evidence base and, you know, we've got a basis by which we recommend that as the forward plan for the JSNA work. The Mental Health Needs Assessment Pilot Work has again started and it started well. And, you know, at the moment, we've been currently sort of mapping out the data and the evidence that we have in order to sort of build the JSNA needs assessment itself. We've been working quite closely in both, in a similar way to the Health Impact Assessment, we've been working closely with partners. And again, just want to extend my thanks to all the different organisations who've been involved in working with Warwickshire County Council on this. And this has been especially good to have support and representation from the NHS, both through CCJ and providers and the police to help us scope out the different data sources and understand how they all might fit together to give us a good understanding of mental health. And again, the current timeline has got us set out there to sort of complete that in April 2021. Although to realise that this wave of the pandemic might impact on how partners can be involved, but that is the aspiration and to bring something back to the Health and Wellbeing Board for that time. And also just to highlight, you recall the COVID nineteen Health Impact Assessment that we discussed at the last Health and Wellbeing Board, it's now listed on the ALGA website as an example of good practice through the pandemic. And there's a link within the paper there. So that's the update and I'm more than happy to take any questions.
Judy.
Tongue in cheek really, because the no birth weight babies in Witten Ash didn't really help me with my youth club grant application. But the open spaces, how people enjoyed. Um, but the open spaces, um, how, um, people, um, enjoyed it and wanted more access to it did. So JSNA's are okay for some things, but not always for others. I tried really hard to link it into low birth weight babies, but it, it didn't work. I'm going, but I'm in the youth club that's having babies at the moment, so thank you.
No matter. But thank you for, you know, I do appreciate that, you know. Although they, they might not sort of meet every single need. I'm, I'm always appreciative of when people look to see if they, if they can help.
Maura.
No, thank you Les. Uh, yeah, if this moved towards the themed-based, um, assessments, which is, could be really useful. Are they still going to reference, are you still going to reference the places that have been, uh, that the JSNA, place-based JSNA's have been based on? So that we all get, um, granular data, if you like, on the different areas? Because this will help us as well in moving forward. So is that part of the plan?
Yes, so I want it to, to show some of that breakdown. And again, there's, there's often the, the challenge between sort of the, the physical geographies and the health service geographies based around, um, sort of general practices and the sort of overlapping boundaries between, between the two, which makes some of that more challenging. But I would want to represent the, the geographies that we've already set out as well as a, a lower sort of neighbourhood level within those, within those analyses. Um, again, it's, the shift to thematic work was, was one that, um, again, we, we sort of didn't want to lose entirely that understanding of neighbourhoods, what's happening at place and, and neighbourhood through that. So again, you know, that, that comparison is, is very important, I think, and still will be in the future.
Thanks, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other queries for, for, for Duncan? Um, we have three recommendations, note of the progress today, which, which we have. Uh, and then using the evidence, um, and that's, uh, what we've got seen as well. Particularly, uh, item three, support development of the mental health needs assessment, which is brilliant. It's on the go, uh, and feeding into the, uh, bid that, uh, we joined putting in for some of the government mental health, um, funding. So, um, excellent work going there. So thank you for that, um, Duncan. Um, and you've got the link if you need it, as Duncan said. Can we just go back and, and welcome back, um, Phil, Phil Johns, um, who went off to take a call? And we totally understand that. Who introduced himself and gives us an update on vac, vaccination. On the, on the, again, but it's critical to us all at this time. And certainly as members, we're getting lots of questions, so.
Thank you, thank you Chair. And apologies for not being, not being here when called. I was talking about vaccinations, um, which, which is a, a key priority at the moment. And in terms of where we're at in, uh, in Warwickshire, in County Warwickshire in, in reality, um, the hospital hubs now at both George Elliot, uh, and South Warwickshire, uh, have gone live. And as you'll be aware from previous press, uh, UHW was live a number of weeks ago. Uh, we have a number of the GP groups covering vaccinations, uh, across the county now. And next week, we should be at a point of, uh, full coverage. Um, so we should be offering vaccinations in each of our PCN areas going forwards. Um, uh, understanding is, I think, based on the capacity we think we'll be bringing online. We, we have enough in terms of the target set for us, um, into February for the first priority groups. Uh, supply vaccine notwithstanding, um, we're not aware at the moment of any, any further issues with supply. Um, as we are now using both the Pfizer and the AstraZeneca vaccine. So I think it's, um, it's a good news to, I think, for our, for our population that we'll have sufficient capacity there to, to start the, the mass rollout effectively. The biggest sites, we believe, will come online, uh, at the end of January. I think it's the week commencing, the 25th, that is still subject to some discussion. But in terms of general practice coverage, the full roll of, out of that will have happened. In terms of the hospital hub coverage, the full roll of, out of that will have happened as well. Because County Warwickshire Partnership Trust hub, um, unless Simon tells me differently, uh, will come online from Thursday as well.
Do we have a total list of sites we could, um, publicise yet?
Uh, yes, we probably can. Yes, yes, we'll, we'll share, uh, something to come out. I believe we'll some doing a briefing, um, with some council and maybe colleagues on Friday as well. Uh, in a similar vein, but yes, we will share the list of sites, um, so everyone knows where they're being held.
That'd be brilliant. Thank you. Russell, you want to come on?
Phil, uh, great to meet you. It'll be digitally. Um, and it's simplest for the citizens we serve. Um, if we take the aspiration of, um, being able to do two million jabs a week nationally, our share of it, I'm not sure what that number is, but assuming the vaccine is available, in terms of our ability to put injections into arms, are we in a position now to be confident that we can do our share of the two million jabs a week?
Yes, we, we don't, you're wrong. We don't, we haven't got a share of such, normally about one percent. Um, so about 20,000 a week. And we think we would be in a position to deliver 20,000 or in excess of 20,000 a week.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Simon, did you want to comment?
Uh, only perhaps to add from, it picks up a Russell's point, but also builds on what Phil said. I think we will be limited by the availability of vaccine. The other thing will be a very clear national steer on the priority list. So there's an expectation that we start with eighty, eighty plus and Calo residents and stuff, which we're well on route to covering. Then it'll be clinically vulnerable over seventy fives and then it'll be health and social care staff. So the issue about getting it to the whole of the population of County Warwickshire will be a combination of that careful planning around capacity and availability, but also following that, that priority, uh, threshold. But I, I'm confident personally, um, that, that we've, we're well down the road to where we should be in planning, uh, having all of those arrangements in place if we get the supplies of vaccine coming through.
Okay, thank you. Richard Long. Richard? You're all mute. I think he's. Richard Long, are you, you've got your hand up? Can we go to Margaret Bell and we'll come back to Richard?
Um, thank you Chair. It's, it's just, um, to clarify my own mind. Um, I understand that the PCNs, as they get set up, they will obviously be calling their patients in according to the priority list. Um, what, what's happening at the hospitals? Is that purely for clinical staff vaccinations or is the general public accessing there? And if so, how does that happen?
Uh, it's, it's a mix. So we, we are also able to vaccinate, as you know, health and care staff, uh, as well. So, so hospitals, UHW has been doing a, a mix of both. One of the things we wanted to start looking at as we've got capacity online is, is, is just how sensibly is that best used now to ensure coverage of both health and care staff and those priority patients? Um, but at the moment, it's been about standing up the capacity and getting vaccinations started in line without this. But we'll try and add now some more coherence to the overall programme.
Oh, sorry, just so I'm clear. So what you're saying is that at the moment, obviously there's lots of health and care staff to be done and that's what they're concentrating on, which is fine. Um, so it's, for as far as the general public, given the priority areas are concerned, they don't go to the hospital for that. Their, their GPs will sort that out. Is that what we're saying?
Sarah, do you want to come in?
Yeah, I see Chair nodding.
Well, I was just nodding Margaret. You summarised it really well at the end there, yes. So if you are at the hospital for a hospital appointment or you're unfortunate enough to, to need it to be admitted, but well enough for a vaccine and you're in the correct priority cohorts, you can be vaccinated at the hospital. Um, but don't proactively turn up at the hospital as a, as a general member of the public. The general members of the public will be vaccinated at the moment at the primary care PCN sites. And we believe that, um, going forwards, we would have capacity enough to, to do that. But as Phil has said, we want to work as a system and where, where we do see that we need to flex and, and do different innovative things, then we, we absolutely will do what we can. But at the moment, yes, the message to your constituents would be very much, have it done locally, don't go to the hospital please, unless you happen to be going there for an appointment anyway.
Okay, uh, I've got Dave Parsons and John Bowman next.
Thank you Les. Yeah, um, three things really Phil. Um, first of all, uh, you mentioned that the largest centre, uh, is, is, um, about to be up and running, but you didn't mention where it was unless I missed it. I wonder if you could tell us that. Um, second thing is, it seems to me that really the key to getting these vaccines out is through the GPs and through the local centres because that's where people can get to and it'll work. And I wonder what support we're able to give the GP practices because, um, you know, that, that's pretty important. Um, I know locally, they're, they're sort of ringing people up and getting premises because I've been involved in that. But, uh, but you know, what are we doing essentially for that? And then finally, um, it, it seems to me to be a big issue that teachers are not part of the priority group. Um, you know, we've, we've got this lockdown, it's February half term. But is it gonna be extended beyond that because teachers can't go safely back to work? And that's, that's a very big issue in my view.
Uh, I can probably take, take a couple more John, and some arm locks. We're heading in the same direction as well, if you make me. John, John Bowman.
Uh, sorry Chair, I mistook my hand for my chat.
That's fine, that's, that's fine. Um, uh, Richard Long, are you still willing to contribute?
Uh, yes, thank you Chair. Um, Richard Long representing Felix II, the Police and Crime Commissioner for Yorkshire. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, really in the context of capacity of actual vaccinators, um, whether there was any, uh, reassurance around the reported amounts of bureaucracy that already trained medical staff were having to undergo uh, in order to become volunteer vaccinators in their spare time, uh, in their local communities?
Shall we take those, um, Phil, and then we'll come back to one, a couple more?
Yeah, yeah, no, probably the mass vaccination site, we're staying the, I think it's agricultural centres. I probably got the title slightly wrong. And in terms of support to, uh, GPs, um, the, the CCG has, has a team, uh, and indeed Simon and the County Warwickshire Partnership Trust are also offering support to, to GP colleagues in some instances, um, in terms of vaccination. Uh, and there is also NHS England, uh, offering different levels of, of support as well. Um, so there is quite a lot of coordination in support of, of PCN colleagues. In fact, to be fair, GP colleagues have, have recognised that, uh, many times with, with us. Um, I can't comment, uh, on the teacher issue. Uh, we, we, we work to a, a national set of, of priorities out of our, of our three. I do appreciate the issue, um, but we, we will vaccinate as we are told to, uh, vaccinate. And we are also escalating the issue around, uh, qualifications and, and checks. Um, so it is a thing that is holding up, uh, people getting back to support the vaccination programme. But we, we continue to escalate that issue. Um, I don't know whether actually David or Sarah wants anything else about that.
Yeah, sure, I'll add on that one.
Yeah, carry on Dave.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, it is, it is an issue. I mean, the, the, the mammoth task of getting re, uh, registered, my own wife has been struggling through for the last month. Um, but fortunately at the moment, we've been able to run vaccination centres with our own staff who are obviously already well-trained because they do the flu campaign. Uh, we do it very efficiently. Um, and in some respects, some of our staff are getting a bit more frustrated that they can't be more efficient, uh, doing it. So I think at the moment, we are not necessarily in need of the additional vaccinators. We obviously will do, when we're talking 20,000 vaccines a week. I mean, we've been vaccinating nurses, uh, all the way before Christmas and we haven't had any problem whatsoever getting vaccinated. In fact, we've had people, um, you know, have an almost like a waiting list, um, to, to do it. Um, I'm sure there's an obstacle wear off after a month or two. Um, but at the moment, um, there's an awful lot of goodwill out there and actually we all realise it's for the common good. It's really important we get this happening. And to some extent, the, the biggest problem we're having is balancing the day-to-day normal work with the vaccination work. And I have to say one thing that we are trying to guess, um, agreed, um, and is what things do you generally practise, can they actually not do to allow them to do vaccinations? And that is a bit of an issue now. That might not be a problem if we have, you know, a load of people who are ex-colleagues coming out of the woodwork. Uh, I have to say, I've been in this morning with people that are ex-colleagues, uh, some more ex than others, but some have only been an ex-colleague for two years, um, and they're struggling with the same things. Um, I know centrally there is, um, a big push to minimise the, uh, the bureaucracy. But we do have to remember it's gotta be safe. And, you know, even if you've been out of the business for two years, you might have forgotten something. So there are some really important things that the people need to know before they stick a needle in your arm. Um, uh, so I think that we are, well, we are, I mean, in Warwickshire at the moment, we're in a better place in some areas, I think.
Thank you Les. Um, do you want to come back?
Um, just on a, I suppose a lighter point, I think the person who asked the question, I'm sorry. I can't remember whether it was John or about what, what can we do? What can we do to support? I think Phil's answered as to what the CCG and NHS England are doing. But if there's a wider system people want to support, then, um, we, the, the local vaccination centres and through CWPT have got a, a bank that they are, they are holding for people that want to be both staff and also volunteers. I know that some of our local MPs and definitely our councillors have, have offered their services as kind of, um, you know, hosts in the waiting room and, and, and things like that. So I think we, we do need potentially volunteers. So if people are keen to help in that respect, then as David said, in your case, add in your name to a waiting list. But, um, but in terms of, and, and also I think, um, please, I think one of the things that most of the people on this call can do is, is actively promote the uptake of the vaccine when it's offered to people, to people in cohorts and be positive supporters of that. Um, so, yeah.
The, the issue, the issue going volunteers is really important. I mean, I have to say, I've been really impressed by the volunteers that we've had so far. Um, I've been in a very dark and very cold Warwickshire golf club, it's sort of twenty past seven in the morning and they're already there waiting, asking what can they do? And I think, you know, and I suspect they are going to be keen to keep doing this for an awfully lot longer time than we perhaps would, uh, would have realised. So, um, but the more the merrier, because the more sites we've got, the more volunteers we need.
Hmm. But I do know my brother has been volunteered for car park, has volunteered for car park marshalling in Bedfordshire and has got to do all the modus operandi doctors have.
Oh, well, I, I have to say, we haven't asked the question. Um, and so, um, as far as I'm concerned, if you volunteer and you want to be car park marshal or greet people, I don't see what qualification you need other than to be pleasant to people.
Agreed. So, uh, uh, we need to move quick, quickly on, but I've got Stella, Marion and Diane Wickfield next.
So, okay, I've, I've taken my hand down actually, so you can, so you can cross me off the list.
Thank you. Marion Humphries, Diane Wickfield.
Thank you Chair. Um, part of the question's been answered. It's about, I'm always being asked about children, vaccines and school. So, um, you know, are you, I know you weren't able to answer this, but I mean, it's a case of, will the children, if they go back to school, be vaccinated at school by the school nurses? Because you've got more than one.
No.
I don't think you can't answer it.
Well, I can because the vaccine isn't licensed for children. So we won't be, we won't be vaccinating, um.
Not secondary school children?
Well, only the very oldest, the secondary school children. The maybe, you know, final year of school might be eligible, but the, certainly the younger ones won't.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Diane Wickfield.
Thanks Les. Um, my question is regarding the impact of individuals and groups taking an anti-vaccine stance. Um, we've been discussing this a lot at our board at CWPT. And the query concerns the communications to counter the anti-vaccine stance and also around what data are we collecting on those personal characteristics and postcodes for those that are. for those that are actually having the vaccine, so we can identify the clear gaps that we need to be targeting?
So just don't understand the question properly. Are we properly understanding our communities in terms of how, okay. So at the moment, as I said earlier, our rollout is about getting the coverage across the piece and working our way through the cohort group. There is an issue at the moment around access to information about those vaccinated as a system. But you'll be aware as well as anybody that we need to make sure that everyone can get access to the vaccine, wherever they may be based and wherever they live. So, you know, we will work with you and all the colleagues about how we make that happen as we work our way through the priorities and certainly trying to pick out where there are communities not able to, or not choosing, I suspect, probably the right word, to access the vaccine. Emily, is that going to be a similar circumstance? Do you want to come in, eh?
Yeah, so I just thought I'd highlight, we have trained up a number of COVID-19 community champions now who are effectively leaders and volunteers within their local areas. And obviously, vaccinations has been a key question for them. And many of them are really willing to help promote messages around safety of vaccines, but they've also been sharing, you know, some of the concerns that they hear within communities. So we are using that kind of grassroots level to help support this response as well. And currently creating a bit of an FAQ for the people so we can empower people within our communities to kind of respond appropriately. So, yeah, I wanted to share that. I think I was reassured by a recent survey, I can't remember now if it was Oner or Ipsos Mori, which shows that actually only about one in 10 people may not take the vaccine when it's offered to them. Whereas I think a few months back, it was concerned that it might be around 30, 40% of the population. So I think now it's here and people want their lives back so much, actually that concern is, but hopefully a bit less.
Yeah, I've seen the light. Jeff Morgan and Russell Hardy.
Thanks, Les. I appreciate what our NHS colleagues have said about vaccinate or capacity. But of course, as, as the weeks go on, as we get down from the over-80s to the over-70s, there are a lot more of us, and the, and the demand on the system is bound to rise. Are there any reasons why we're not using pharmacists who are, who are regularly giving flu jabs, for instance? Or even people like community phlebotomists, one of whom came to my house yesterday and did a quick blood test? I mean, these are people who are, who are sticking needles in people for a living.
Can I, can I answer that? Can I answer that one quickly? Well, the most probably important thing is the vaccine that we're currently using does not lend itself for being used like that. This is extremely unstable, and once it's been thawed, we, well, I mean, if we move it more than about 10 metres, that's about as far as we move it. So technically, it's impossible at the moment to use the vaccine that we're using. The AstraZeneca may be more flexible, but at the moment, that isn't being planned. As far as using pharmacists.
At the moment, David, then, are we not using the AstraZeneca vaccine?
Well, in the hospitals that have started using it, we won't start using it in the community till Fri-, we're not, I'm not getting any advice till Friday. But then we will be using it, but we'll be using it mainly to go around the care homes and the care home staff. But then ultimately, we will. But it is a question of the delivery modules, they'll get sent to the, to the delivery, to the hubs where we are. And so there is, there is some logistic issues here. Regarding pharmacists, we've actually using pharmacists at the moment for their expertise because the Pfizer vaccine has to be diluted. And it's a very precise dilution. And actually, we may quite rapidly come to the conclusion that the people who are most capable of doing that effectively are our pharmacist colleagues. So in fact, all of the GP centres that have been set up so far have always had a pharmacist there involved in the, in part of the process, although they haven't actually done any vaccinating to my note. But that's actually doing a more important role because it's more important that what's in the syringe is the correct dilution than, you know, it's one of those sort of critical bits. So I think as far as using high-strength pharmacists, much like the flu, although that could be a potential, they'd have to be quite big because of the pack sizes. We're talking here of, I mean, at the moment, our pack size is 975 vaccines. So, and they've got to be used within three and a half days. And so you've got to be a very big high-strength pharmacist to be guaranteed you're going to ship 975 vaccines in three days.
Okay, okay. Russell, and then a very quick one from you, Dave, because you've been around once, and when you hand them on again, this is next right, and I'm really grateful to Phil for coming to do this. And I realise it's critical for us all, but time is an essence as well. Russell?
Just very quickly, I think Diane's point about the sort of anti-vaxer mood amongst some, I don't think should be underestimated. One of the things we've done down at Wyffaly yesterday, which I'm very happy to share, is we had quite a movement going on in Herefordshire about an anti-vaccine sort of attitude. So we had one of our respiratory consultants who'd had Covid and actually has had the jab since, talking very positively. And I think the whole PR side, we shouldn't underestimate. I've even heard in Claverton of a local butcher who's been saying to people that they shouldn't be having the vaccine. So I think locally, we shouldn't underestimate the danger of an anti-vaccine attitude. And our PR against that, I think, is very important. But certainly what we've done down at Wyffaly is to use respiratory consultants, people on the frontline who've seen the disease in action, and use their examples and got press releases out of the local press, using frontline doctors and nurses to talk about the importance of having the vaccine. So I leave that with you, Phil. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get our, our PR onto that as well. Russell, thank you for that. Dave?
Yeah, interesting things. Thanks for coming around again. I mean, I think to a certain extent, yes, we have got to be aware of the anti-vaccine thing. But I think we've also got to be aware of not overstating it. Because, you know, locally, certain people in my age group, they're metaphorically rolling up their sleeves all the time, ready to go, you know. And, and we don't, in a sense, want to give you more credence to it than it perhaps deserves. The other thing about pharmacists and the like, I understand from my local practice because we've been setting up premises, that with the Pfizer vaccine, there's a requirement for a 15-minute supervision afterwards. I don't know whether that's going to be the case with the AstraZeneca, but, you know, is that, Brian?
As I say, the 15-minute observation isn't mandatory now, but it is with the Pfizer.
Yeah, so, you know, for the Pfizer vaccine, you've got to be able to put some people somewhere for 15 minutes, basically, and keep them under the eye, yeah.
Okay, thanks for that. Phil, anything you'd like to find out?
I think you just probably noticed, actually, that pharmacists are going to be considered as part of, pharmacies, shall I say, are going to be considered as part of the, the ongoing rollout. And they'll just be subject to similar criteria that we actually, in general practice, say, what can be done, and what they can manage to do. And the other point which I probably missed, the staff, whilst we're kind of aside, we'll let you know where the sites are. As, as you all know, it's not turn up at a site and get vaccinated, you'll be called for your vaccination. So we wouldn't be looking to push out lots of messaging around here are vaccination sites because actually, we will call people to them. It's not a ten as you wish.
That's great. Really, thank you very much, Phil. Thank you for coming at very short notice and giving us that update. Really, really appreciate it. And welcome to our system from us all, I'm sure.
Thank you, Rob.
So if we move on back to the pharmaceutical needs assessment, back to you Duncan, because I realise you need to get away.
Thank you, Chair. This is just the briefest of updates, just to quickly talk through the paper that's in front of you. So you'll be aware, of course, from the last time that NHSE moved the deadline when we had to submit pharmaceutical needs assessment to March 2022, so extend the deadline by one year. And so work to produce the full pharmaceutical needs assessment for Warwickshire will begin in March and sort of have a year-long programme, as you can see, sort of set out in table one in the paper. We're working collaboratively with Coventry on it, so that similar information is shown across the whole of the system. And so the same data is available in a comparable way. So we're working closely across local authorities on that one. And just to also make the board aware that because of the time that will have passed since the previous pharmaceutical needs assessment, we're also going to publish a brief supplementary statement which updates a couple of the key statistics and data within it, and helps to just keep it relevant and usable while we're working on the full, full needs assessment.
Any questions for Duncan? Dave Parsons, you've got your hand up. Is that heritage, an old one or anyone?
It's a tall one, I'm sorry, Dave, I'll take it.
That's fine. So thank you for that, Duncan. We're asked to note the update and to agree that we do this in partnership with Coventry City Council. And I think that's the best, firstly, I think that's the best way forward. Has anybody, any other view? In which case, can we move forward? No, that's fine, Duncan. Thank you for that. Letting you get that one to your next, next role.
Thank you.
So we move on to the Social Inequalities Action Plan, and we've got, welcome Kate Sahota.
Hi, Kate. Hi, how are you doing?
Yeah, we'll have a quick overview and.
Yeah, I'm just going to share some slides. I'm not going to go through them all. I am going to leave them to you to kind of have a look afterwards.
That'll be good.
So can you, let me just do this. Can you all see that?
Yep.
Okay, brilliant. So we're calling this an approach to tackling social inequalities. We're in the process of developing a strategy at the moment, so the name may change. I'm just, this presentation, there's four things behind it. The first thing is around outlining the social inequalities in the picture in Warwickshire. There's information about the context of kind of why and how we're developing this strategy. I've got some findings that I want to run through with you from the engagement that we've done so far, and then talk to you about next steps. So the first couple of slides, I will go through fairly promptly because you can kind of look at that in your own time. But there's a summary of social inequality. And in this context, we're talking about it in terms of economic, social mobility and education, crime, health, and then things around community participation. So poverty is sometimes a phrase that we use to describe this kind of work, but actually, we're trying to think about poverty in its broadest term. And the reason that we are looking at this now, you probably are very aware of this, that there have been quite significant changes in social inequality, and actually, there's been a dramatic increase in the share of income going to the top and the decline in the share going to the bottom. There are some stats here, so the slides to, this is the slide to look at if you want to see the data behind this. So the data.warwickshire.gov.uk website has got a whole host of information. And there is a specific section looking at poverty and inequalities. But this will give you data around different parts of Warwickshire and how poverty is different and how it affects different people. So none of you will be surprised to read some of the data behind this. There's some more data here around the social inequality between different ethnic groups. Then we have health inequalities, which you'll definitely be very familiar with with this board. And then we've got some data around education attainment. So I think this, this shows where we've got quite a significant variation that you might not expect. So for example, in the early years' foundation stage, this is the gap in attainment between children who we have them classed as preschool meals. So if they're eligible for preschool meals, they're classed as disadvantaged. So the widest gap for attainment is actually in Stratford-upon-Avon for the early years. Whereas as you go through the years, through key stage one, key stage two and key stage four, by the time you get to key stage four, that's where the smallest gap then is Stratford-upon-Avon. And actually, the thing in Warwickshire that we're most concerned about is the fact that compared to our statistical neighbours and the national data, we are doing quite poorly really. So you can see in key stage two, the gap is 24% in Warwickshire compared to 19% nationally. And again, that rises to 28% in key stage four. There's some data here around food bank access. So this is the data that we have available to us for 2018, 2019, the trust of trust. And actually, what this data shows us is that it isn't necessarily families that are on benefits that need to access a food bank, although that is a significant proportion. It is actually those that are in employment that are on low income. Here is the kind of snapshot that we've got around the impact of Covid. So there's some data here around the increase in the number of families claiming universal credit or job seekers allowance. So it's timely for us to be looking at this in terms of, I think the point that Russell made quite a while ago now, but around our looking at the priorities, actually, things, things are going to be different for us going forward due to the impact of Covid to where we were perhaps over twelve months ago. So the process that we've gone through, that we're going to at the moment, we established a working group within Warwickshire County Council in August 2020, and we've been meeting monthly to go through the work that we need to do. We have undertaken engagement with practitioners, partners and services, with residents in Warwickshire, and also with our partners corporately. And we propose that there'll be three key reports that come out of this. So there's a detailed stocktake report that's being produced, looking at where we're currently at and what's going on. We're developing a strategy with some focused priorities, and I'll come on to what we think those might be shortly. And then we need an achievable action plan to be able to deliver those focused priorities. And it's important to mention here that actually, the work that we've identified as priorities through this engagement has got very, very strong links with other pieces of work going on because it is such a broad topic. So this strategy couldn't possibly attempt to try and solve all of our challenges. We do need to make sure that we are linking up with other strategies and pieces of work that are going on. So for example, there's the healthcare partnerships, teaching commissions, we've got the health wellbeing boards, and the strategy that you're responsible for. We have the education strategy that leads on closing the gap for disadvantaged students. We also have the COVID-19 recovery plan and the housing and homelessness strategy. So it's just, there are plenty more that we will be working with, but it was just to kind of provide a bit of reassurance to members of all that there are very close links with what we are doing, with what other boards and other strategies are looking at, and that we will be working with partners to ensure that they all align. So just moving on now to the discussion for when we did the engagement. So we, in order to ensure that people were thinking about inequalities in their broadest terms, we identified eight key themes for discussion. And these were used as our starting point for conversation around what people felt about inequalities and how they were affecting families that we work with. It was a helpful problem because actually, people do sometimes get really stuck into certain aspects of poverty and how those are affecting families. So to ensure that we were kind of covering it all in its broadest sense, these were a useful guide. And we undertook nine webinars with practitioners between October and November last year. And we had lots of practitioners registered from a really wide range of organisations. So it was a really comprehensive set of discussions that we had. Those webinars were followed up by a session with elected members. And we had quite a lot, I think, of you on this call today were there. And we had a really good discussion with elected members about issues that they're facing and that are coming through from their residents, a kind of a key complaint. So that's all kind of helped form the picture. So in terms of practitioner engagement, I've just got some, the next couple of slides, the summary, using the things that I mentioned before. So in terms of family and community, barriers to access to services was a big problem in terms of geographical barriers, so those living in rural locations particularly. So where historically we had a problem, we would have had 39 children and family centres. Reducing that to 14 means that it actually can be more challenging sometimes for families to access their services. And travel around the county is very expensive. Childcare was a barrier to some families being able to access either work, employment or support services as well. So not able to have that time with perhaps their social worker in order to do work to benefit their child, whether that was because they were on a zero hour contract or they were a shift worker. But having affordable and flexible childcare was a real challenge. I've mentioned this already in terms of the food bank, but the biggest, one of the biggest challenges for people isn't that they aren't in work, it's that they're in work and they're not earning enough money to be able to live. So that's, that's something that I think you'll see when we come to recommendations, some areas that we will potentially need to focus on. In terms of health and wellbeing, we know that there are links to mental health, poverty, and that there's a vicious circle of cause and effect. So people develop a mental health issue, that means that they have to leave employment, and then the mental health issues exacerbate, and then they struggle to get back into employment. And then also linked to the health and wellbeing around healthy lifestyles. And that actually, if you're living in poverty, you're perhaps working multiple jobs in order to get by, the kind of desirability, skills to be able to think about cooking healthy meals are not top of your priority list. In terms of digital, we, we know that there are families that don't have access to technology, and that is something that we need to work on and solve. But it's not just about access to technology, it's also about access to the skills to be able to. and that is something that we need to work on and solve. But it's not just about access to technology, it's also about access to the skills to be able to use technology. So for those of us with teenage children, they definitely know their way around a laptop probably better than we do. But if you've got a seven-year-old at home that's trying to kind of home learn and use a laptop, they do need an awful lot more support. So it is about ensuring that people have the appropriate skills to be able to use the tools that we're expecting them to use. And we've seen an increase in terms of persistent use of food banks. So we acknowledge that there are always going to be people that end up in crisis, and that they may need to use a food bank on the odd occasion. But what we're concerned about are those families where they are persistently having to use a food bank, and they are unable to kind of get by without that support, which is really only there to be a temporary measure. Housing and fuel is one of the biggest referral reasons into FIS, so we've got issues around housing conditions and overcrowding. And again, discussions around where houses, where new developments are built. Quite often, the kind of social housing is at the part of the development where they are very isolated and there are poor transport links. And then the final point around financial inclusion, I've kind of alluded to this already, but this poverty premium that is, kind of families that are on low income, the, the extra cost of there as a family, because they weren't able to get affordable credit, is almost two thousand pounds a year for those families. So we have some kind of cross-cutting things as well to pick up. So one of the, the top ones that came through, and also John Coleman did a recent blog that he sent out to the children and family staff around poverty, and he had a number of responses back from practitioners highlighting this issue to him as well. But there is a real gap in kind of awareness and understanding and knowledge in terms of how to effectively identify poverty, and what the effects are, and what the, what services are available for them to signpost to. So we need to do a piece of work around how do we sensitively work with families to really support them with that. And due to Covid nineteen, we have, have seen a significant increase in the number of families who are entering poverty for the first time. So they've never experienced it before, and actually they don't know what's out there, and they are really feeling that stigma of poverty. And we've got a cohort of the population with additional challenges, so learning disabilities from particular parts of the community. And these people will often need ongoing advocacy and support. So how do we make sure that they are able to manage their finances and live with enough money so that they can kind of live how they want, want to live? And then another problem that kind of cuts across all themes is around the issues to do with short-term funding. And actually, if, if we're kind of going for projects with a long year funding, actually that's not ideal, because those projects come to an end and then families don't have anywhere to go. There are a number of cases that I won't go through, but I will leave you to read these afterwards. But these have come from some engagement and taken my great find, so they contacted people experiencing poverty on a number of these different themes to really kind of give that picture of the challenges that families are facing. So I shan't go through those, but we have a few, as you can see. So we're talking about what might work to tackle this. So one of the ideas particularly linked to the issue with families not earning enough money to live, actually is something that we can do as a local authority and as a system to have a commitment to the real living wage. So at the very end of last year, the real living wage, minimum hourly wage went from nine pound thirty up to nine pound fifty. So when that was announced, I checked Warwickshire County Council's lowest hourly salary, and we were standing at nine pound twenty-five. So we were only five p under the previous amount. So one of the things that we could, we could consider as a local authority is that we have a commitment to increasing that to nine pound fifty. And actually, is it something that we commit to just for our staff, but do we work with our commission providers to think about how they can ensure that they're meeting that as well? And we've got an issue around automatic enrolment for free school meals. So schools, if you are claiming benefits, you're eligible to claim free school meals. And with that comes something called the pupil premium, which gives schools an extra amount of money. And from the point of registering, that school then receives that money for the next six years. So if families aren't claiming what they're entitled to, schools aren't accessing money that they are also entitled to. So it's really important that we work to try and increase that take-up. And there's also, some of you may have seen this at the turn of the last year, that a cross-party group of MPs has called on government to allow councils to run universal basic income trials. So it could be an opportunity for something that we might want to look at in this area. And there's some mission statements that again, I'll leave you to have a look at in your own time. So the next steps are that we are in the process of developing the strategy at the moment. We are almost there in terms of the draft with the key points that we want to make. We're going to be sharing it with stakeholders for further discussion later on this month and during February. And then we want to have sign-off with the strategy kind of March, so that we have an action plan that will take us forward from April. And we would like to share the draft strategy with yourselves, so that you can have a look and feedback in terms of the priorities that we're putting forward. So yeah, and then any questions?
Thank you. Thanks very much Kate. I mean, so we'd need to take that if we could to our March meeting.
Yes please, if that's okay.
Yeah, so I will, I'll get Gemma to talk to you.
Yes.
I've got Chris first, then, then Jo.
Oh, I'm used.
Thanks Kate for a very helpful and informative presentation. Simple question, how does this relate to the new health and wellbeing strategy, which also identifies inequalities as one of the three priority themes in future? You alluded to that at the beginning, the importance of making the connections, but it's not clear in my head.
No, so I met with Gemma, and we've gone through the health and wellbeing strategy and looked at where there are links between what we're kind of recommending. So when we come to develop our recommendations, if there are ones that we feel fall better with under the health and wellbeing strategy in terms of the mechanisms through which to drive it forwards, then we will agree that it would sit under the health and wellbeing strategy. But we will make reference to it in the kind of tackling inequality strategy, so that it's not lost, but that there is a mechanism for us to kind of feed that through. And Gemma and I have both gone through a process of kind of cross-referencing the priorities of the strategies to the different ones, to try and line them up a little bit, so that we know, you know, if we're not responsible for delivering a particular piece of work. So the educational attainment one is a really good example of something that we wouldn't be directly delivering it, but we are really keen to support the education closing the gap board and ensuring that they kind of meet that objective. And if we're able to access funding, so for example, central government have announced there's a potential leveling up fund, are there opportunities for us to kind of draw some of that in to help with that work? So it is very complicated, and I agree, it's going to be really important to map out exactly what sits where, so that we are clear, that we are, we are drawing that in the background, that providing with some reassurance that it's going on.
No, thank you. So I mean, the way I'd summarise it is what you're saying is it's about how you integrate inequalities in all policies across the council and that across a wider partnership.
Yeah.
Yep. Gemma, do you want to comment? Is that, okay.
Thanks Les. I suppose, I mean, I can pick it up in my update a bit later on, but I suppose just, just to say, the, the health and wellbeing strategy we're kind of seeing is that umbrella strategy that sits above everything else. And actually, there'll be lots of pieces of work, pieces of work that, as Kate just said, you know, the different, different action plans or strategies around social inequalities or the homelessness work, for example, that will pick up a lot of the, 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 the elements of our ambitions that we, that we need to, to achieve. So, so yeah, we're really thinking it's that sort of, you know, the high level umbrella strategy that other things will feed into.
That's great. Thank you. I've got Joe Barker, Dame Stella and David Parsons in that order. We'll take the three then. Kate can respond.
Kate, hi. Nice to see you. Thank you very much for all your work as ever. If you can crack automatic enrolment for school meals, then you will deserve a damehood.
Excellent.
I've said it the whole time that I have been doing, and bear in mind, I'm a district councillor and a county councillor, and I'm a school governor, which makes me even more of a pain on this subject. It is because, I'm told it's because our organisations just can't talk to each other amidst the software. And then people will raise that it might be something to do with GDPR. So I know you've probably come across all this nonsense, but what it actually means is our kids are just not getting what they're actually due. So if you can crack it, then well done, and you will have, if you need us, all the bolgiest school governors and councillors you need to be really lobbying on it, because we've got to do it, because it's nonsense at the moment, so that was my, that was my only comment.
Thank, thank you Jo, totally agree with you. Stella?
Thanks very much Les. I mean, I was very interested Kate, in, in the fact that you'd had the sessions with practitioners and the practitioner engagement. And this partly links to councillor Barker's comment just a moment ago actually. Because a lot of this, while obviously there's stuff that can be done at a policy level, some of this is about close links on cross-referral between practitioners on the ground. And some, and as we know, where, where services, particularly multidisciplinary services work best, whether it's in Warwickshire or anywhere else, is where you've got very close positive relationships between different practitioners who are able to say, look, I've just come across a family who've got this particular set of issues. Can we link them in with, I don't know, X schools, X restitution fees? And of course, as Jo alluded to, there are all the usual GDPR kind of challenges of some of this. But I just wondered, it was kind of almost the next level down from Chris Ham's question. Chris was in some ways talking about the kind of policy and strategy links. And I suppose what I'm, you know, I suppose like many people around this virtual table, I've spent a lot of time trying to get different services to work together in different contexts. And I, I really liked your, your presentation, and I thought, you know, what you're trying to do, which is in terms of getting a new way or, or looking at new ways of getting this is absolutely right. But the crux of all of this is actually getting it to work on the ground with individual children and families. So it's, I, I just wondered what avenues you were, you were going to pursue in that.
So I suppose it's, can I come in now, Les, do you want me to?
Yeah, no, just take Dave, Dave Parsons briefly, then you can take the, take the group, that's the last hand I have at the moment. Dave?
Yeah, okay, that's right. Right. This is not a pretty picture, I'm afraid, and I come to this with some regret, but what do we say? I mean, I think your strategy homes in absolutely the right areas, and that's, that's there, and it's good stuff. There is a lot of research which indicates quite clearly that in-work poverty is the real problem that we have in our society at the moment. And the main causes of in-work poverty are quite precisely outlined. Private rentals, which are, in general terms, three times in excess of council rentals. Universal credit. I've forgotten the third one there.
Let's go along, keep moving on then.
Yeah, however, you know, a decent home, a decent, the ability to put food on the table is what's absolutely fundamental. And children do not get educated well with their, there is no question of that. Bringing in automatic, you know, registration for free school meals, that will be wonderful and, and really is, will be valuable. But, you know, these other areas are absolutely fundamental, and they are pushing people into poverty, and, and that's there. And unfortunately, they're not in our gift, they're not in the gift of a county council, these are national things. What I have to say is that currently, our county council is not actually in favour of lobbying the government on these matters. And that is, you know, I've got to say, at the moment, I don't believe county council is in tune with its own strategy, and that's there. Just remember, the third one is the access to, to internet access and, and technology. Certainly in the coming lockdown, this is absolutely, utterly fundamental. You know, people with several children are going to struggle. And, and actually, of course, so many homes haven't got access to proper internet or indeed proper, proper equipment. The government rollout, as far as I can see, while I'm getting laptops and the like, has been pretty poor. And, and, you know, we're here now, we've got six weeks. And I believe that the county council has a role in trying to do something about that on our patch. I do believe that the county council should be representing our people in these areas to national governments. And I personally believe that we're not in tune with our own strategy at the moment. Thank you.
I'll take that as read, but we are working on, on getting more computers and that, but we need to decide how many the government send to each, each council. Kate, we'll let you respond.
Okay, thank you. So in terms of the kind of ground at work, working with practitioners on the ground, one of our top priorities, I think I've kind of alluded to, the practitioner training. And one of the things that came out of the sessions that we ran, they were all open invites to any practitioner to come to, which meant that we had people from the fire service, we had people working in schools, we had a really huge mixture of people that came together. And one of the kind of consequences of those sessions was that people did find out an awful lot more about what was going on, that they hadn't currently, they weren't currently aware of. So it brought about that awareness that we need to run these kind of regular forums for groups of professionals to come together to really find out about what's going on. And so I absolutely agree, and I think we've got some work to do at a place-based level in terms of bringing services together. So for example, we've got systems advice operating out children and family centres when we're allowed to have people going in and out. And then the, the other kind of part of that is around having a kind of, an effective training programme and staff that we can bring different practitioners together. So one of the, I can't pre-what's going to be approved, because obviously the whole point around engaging on the proposals is that people might say that they don't agree with those, and still have to go through a kind of authorisation process. But one of the first pieces of work that ideally we should be doing is commissioning an organisation to develop a training package, so that we can roll it out to social workers, teachers, to early help officers, to a whole range of people. It could be people in GP practices, you know, the idea is that we've got a comprehensive training package for people to understand what are the signs and symptoms of poverty, and then what can you do about it locally? So that we've got a resource out there that people can find that information. And there's a specific piece of work going on at the moment with, between social care and the family information service. So if a social worker is working with a family and income is identified as one of the areas through which they're having challenges, and they will be allocated a separate, we call them FIS brokers, and that FIS broker will do specific one-to-one work with that family to work through their issues around employment and poverty and stuff. So it's around kind of putting in that extra bit of support for those families, so that the social worker can work on the bits that they're skilled in doing, and then some of these barriers that families are facing. So that has kind of only recently started, but it's a model that I think we would really be keen to explore, how we can kind of expand that further really. And I can't really answer on the lobbying from members, but yes.
No, no. But Joe Baker's put up that phone companies are offering free data to families, put them by schools, so it's a role for the schools, they know their pupils.
Yeah.
And I did read that, that somewhere, so it's up to us to encourage the schools who are involved to actually make certain that, that, that happens.
And we know John Coleman is working to ensure there is spending to arrange the laptops where there are gaps as well. So we've all been asked to think about that.
Yeah, so that is correct. Time is short, I don't keep you there too long. Any other comments for Kate? If you have any, when you look through all the slides that you're going to, please email Kate or Gemma, and we'll see it all gets put in the mix. So thanks very much Kate.
Thank you.
It really is a good piece of work, and we can all take forward. Thanks, thanks very much. Okay, if we could move on to the Better Together Programme. Rachel, I think you're leading on this for us.
I think you've got me Les.
Oh, Becky, you've got the boss, that's fine. Hi Becky.
Okay, hi everybody. I'm not going to go through the, the report, I think it's fairly self-explanatory, but just pick out a couple of things to make people aware of. So we have been continuing to work through the Warwickshire Better Together Programme over the course of the last year, with a particular focus on a number of projects that support Covid response and Covid recovery when we were there, and also the efforts that we've been working through collectively around hospital discharge. So lots of work has continued to happen around the delivery of the programme over the course of the last year. the course of the last year. One of the projects that has just come to fruition, which is in the report for your information, is around the Vols prevention project and we've got a new media campaign that's just starting. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to alert people to that. You will get some information shortly and if you can share that as widely as possible with your networks, that will be really helpful. Again, a really good example of joint working across the system around a real issue. So you will see the four areas of performance that we are required to report on around the Better Care Fund. The first one of those, delayed transfers of care, has been stood down and you will all be aware of the reasons for that, given the current pressures. The other three are still reported against, but as you can see, they are all impacted by COVID. So reducing our elective admissions, admissions to residential and nursing care and increasing effectiveness of re-ablement. So we are above all of our targets and that is because of, in many instances, the position that we're in around COVID response. That said, we did have positive performance in relation to a number of those before we went in, so something for us to continue to focus on and build on. So the final point is just to alert you all to the fact that we have now had confirmation that there will be an extension of the arrangements, the BCF, for next year, based on the current levels. We are working through jointly the projects and programmes that we intend to fund through the Best Care Programme, the Better Together Programme, and we will be looking to bring that to an extraordinary meeting of the Health and Wellbeing Board, probably next month, so that you can all be cited and sign that off. But just be sure that we're busy in the background across NHS providers, the CCGs and the council to pull that together. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, so we've four recommendations and thanks very, very much Becky. To note the paper, to update the fund and policy framework, which we've done with Becky, and to note the progress for 2021, which Becky's just outlined. And to confirm the site office document has to go to Cabinet and what we will do is circulate it to all members, as Becky has outlined, and then we'll form a subcommittee to sign it off. It is a normal way because there's a deadline for which it's got, and the CCGs have got a similar signing off position, but we'll ensure that everybody sees it before we form a subcommittee to sign it off, if everybody's happy with that. And we will give you time to put back any comments just in case. So because we've got a timescale, we've got to do this. Are we all happy with that? Yep, that's brilliant. So really Becky, thanks very much and thanks for hanging on.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. Bye. Okay, so if we could move on to Chris Hamm and the feedback from the Joint Place Forum and the Health and Care Partnership and any other information, Chris, you care to pass to us?
Thank you very much, Les. And it seems a long time ago since that meeting took place between the Place Forum and the Health and Care Partnership Board, but lots of echoes actually of what we discussed then with what we've been talking about today, not surprising me, and particularly this set of issues around inequalities, which I'll come back to briefly. I'll take the paper as read, if I may, but if I could use the opportunity to just make two or three points and then get on to the specifics. The first that came out from our joint meeting and reiterated in everything today is that our collective response to COVID demonstrates both the necessity of partnership working and the benefits of partnership working. And we've seen that in many different ways. I think initially that was partnership around the delivery of health and care to our population. So for example, the work on hospital discharge and the close relationships then with the council and with care providers. We couldn't have done that within the NHS without that cooperation. I think we've seen it within our hospitals and it's come back again, of course, in the last two or three weeks. Cooperation between hospitals in responding to the need in the population for not just hospital treatment, but critical care services and all of our hospitals now being under huge pressure, even greater than was the case back in April. And because they're working together, we're much better placed to provide mutual aid and support so that if one hospital runs out of capacity, others there are able to step in. And in fact, if I may, Les, it's worth saying that Coventry, Warwickshire has itself been providing mutual aid to neighbouring systems such as Birmingham and Surrey Hull, and we know they've been under even more pressure than others in the Midlands. So we've been able to offer our capacity while we've had it to enable them to do their work as effectively as possible. And where we are now, moving ahead, I think the partnership working will focus more and more on recovery from COVID and also on tackling health inequalities. We talked at the joint meeting about the emerging ANCA alliance, which I know, Les, you're keenly interested in, and the collaboration between councils, NHS organisations, universities. I think it's another way of partnership working, isn't it? Using our collective power as major organisations within our communities to create job opportunities, provide training for people, to get access to good quality and reasonably paid jobs, and also to use our power around local procurement so we can support local businesses. So that's one to watch in the future, something that was discussed and endorsed at the joint meeting. So as far as next steps are concerned, the paper outlines a number of those coming from the joint meeting and the two I would particularly like to highlight are reasserting our commitment as a system, and a system is actually a partnership of member organisations, many of whom are on today's call, to tackling health inequalities, which picks up on what Kate was saying, also resonates with the health and wellbeing strategy and the refresh of that. And I suppose championing the call to action to address inequalities, that is being taken forward within the Health and Care Partnership. It's just how we join up the different strands because we're all trying to give more emphasis now and we'll do that more effectively if we're working together rather than working separately. So that's the first. And the second then is to champion and progress the Year of Wellbeing pledges and to achieve the Thrive Bronze Award. And again, this is a request to member organisations and leaders of those organisations on the call today to help support that so that we can fulfil the ambitions there. And particularly important, obviously, because of the impact COVID has had on staff health and wellbeing, it's a major issue across public services and one of the reasons we're struggling at the moment is because so many of our staff are exhausted, some are off sick, some are having to isolate. So it is self-evident, isn't it, that we need to do as much as we can to support the health and wellbeing of our staff? And that's a request here for us all to be involved in that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris, thanks for that very comprehensive overview. Right, Stella has to leave, yeah, that's fine. So we can move on to our last update and welcome Gemma to give us an update on the health and wellbeing strategy update, some of which we've dipped into already. Gemma, the floor's yours.
Thanks Les. So I presented on the contents of the draft strategy at last board. So today's really just a short update on the progress with where we are at the moment and really just to highlight that the consultation period closed yesterday after running for a period of five weeks. So thank you to everyone for comments and inputs and everything that's been sent through about the draft strategy. So we received over 300 responses to our Ask Warwickshire survey and also 200 responses to the Easy Read survey that Grapevine had produced for us. And the consultation asked both residents and people working within Warwickshire whether they agreed with our priorities and our proposed ways of measuring against them. So we, as part of the consultation, we presented the strategy to each of the health and wellbeing partnerships and a number of different forums as well, including Heads of Housing and the Black and Asian Minority Ethnic Test and Trace Community Engagement Group. There's also been lots of comms pushes through our WCC channels and wider networks and all of your networks as well. And we'd also commissioned some additional comms support to push the survey out just before Christmas and in these last few days. Grapevine are currently producing an easy read version of the strategy itself and as we work to incorporate all the findings from the consultation, we'll make sure that that's reflected in the version that they're producing as well. And that will be coming to the March Health and Wellbeing Board to sign off. So I just wanted to pick up on some of the points that Ristal had said as well. So the priorities listed within the strategy are around children and young people having the best start in life and prevention and early intervention of mental health and wellbeing as well as reducing inequalities in health. So we said at the moment that we would review those priorities every two years, but kind of noting Ristal's point about those emerging findings from COVID and, you know, those documents that are coming through. Emily mentioned the fact that there might be, you know, another iteration of the survey and the health impact assessment as well, and some of these assessments that are coming out. So it might be that we need to reduce that sort of review timeline of those priorities or maybe make it more of an iterative process. But I suppose, again, just to say that the strategy itself will be that sort of umbrella piece that is overpinning all of those other pieces of work. So it might be that actually they're the places, they're sort of the key places where any emerging findings are being fed into and that we, you know, we stick with those sort of overarching priorities. But so over the next few weeks, we'll be reviewing all of the responses from the consultation and making sure that they're fed in to the final version. And then the Health and Wellbeing Executive Group, which is meeting next month, will be looking at the action planning around the strategy and also continuing with some of the mapping work, which Kate mentioned that me and her had been looking at previously. Thank you.
Any queries for Gemma, anyone? Yeah, I've got a handle. So Chris?
Yeah, well, thanks, Gemma. Good, good report and helpful to see it at this stage while it's still being finalised. I think there are two aspects of this, aren't there? One is what are the priorities? And you're very clear in the document about that. And the second is how are we going to work to deliver on those priorities? And I guess the plea I wanted to enter, and I'm pushing at a wide open door here, is making sure that the how involves the voluntary community sector partners as much as possible because you've referred to the excellent work of organisations like Grapevine and many others that we're blessed with in our health and care partnership and the wider assistance. So if we can look for any opportunity, because they've been through an incredibly tough time, as we all have in response to COVID, and much more fragile than public sector organisations. So when you come back to us again, if there could be a stronger focus as possible on that, I think that would be very welcome.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, take that one on board. We will, if we can, try to get the agenda out as early as possible for the next meeting or send you all a draft before we put it in the agenda so that you have plenty of time to look at it because it's critical we get this where we always should be. Any other comment? In which case, thank you, Gemma. Very, very good. We're going in the right direction. Well done. So we've, one other item on our agenda, which is the Forward Plan, which is in the pack. March will be a busy, busy meeting, one or two key documents to sign off and obviously the strategy. And we'll have our new countywide homeless strategy as well. And we've added Kate's documents as well. So the Forward Plan is in your, is in a pack of documents and we'll take that as read unless anybody's an issue. Gemma, you want to comment on that as well?
Yes, just to say on that, Les, we've also got the Director of Public Health Annual Report, which will be coming to that one. And also the dates are wrong in your packs. So it will be the, it's the 3rd of March, the next Health and Wellbeing Board, which is the day after the Joint Place Forum, which is on the 2nd. So I just make sure that we get those dates changed.
That's great, thank you. Any other comments? I've no any other business notified to me that is urgent. Nobody's raising in, so thank you very much. It's been a long meeting, but it's been a very productive meeting. Thank you all for your input and we'll see you next time. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Bye, bye.
Bye Gemma.
Bye everybody.
Check them out.
Okay, Jack, if you can cease filming, please.